I'm going to call the December 1st meeting of the West Des Moines City Council to order and invite you to all stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to God, for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, please sign in.
We have four members present in the chamber. Renee, are you online? Are you connected?
I know she was going to be connecting. I think she'll probably be on momentarily. When she comes on, we will just, we'll just retake attendance at that time.
Yep, sounds good.
Okay. Ryan, have there been any changes to the agenda?
There is one change, Your Honor, removal of the executive session at the end of the meeting.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved, seconded.
Yes, moved and seconded. Please vote. Okay, moving on to item two, Citizens Forum. Anybody that would like to address the council on any item that is not either part of public hearings or new business, item six or seven, this is your time. Please come to the podium here, give us your name and address for the record. We ask that you keep it civil and respectful and to five minutes or less. Is there anybody in the chamber that would like to address the council for Citizens Forum? Okay, I think we've got Steve Freevert coming up here, maybe to talk to us about the postponement of the Small Business Saturday.
You read my mind.
All right, go ahead, Steve.
Steve Freevert, Executive Director of the Historic Valley Junction Foundation. I did not think I'd be talking about Small Business Saturday, two council meetings in a row, but here we are. The weather had another plan for us. So we have rescheduled our festivities, our promotion for Small Business Saturday. This Saturday, we'll be handing out bags at the Historic City Hall office. All our businesses plan to be open, the weather's going to be fine, and as I tell people, every Saturday is Small Business Saturday for Valley Junction. So we're looking forward to that. Also wanted to give a big thank you to Public Services. They did a tremendous job getting the streets and the parking areas cleared out. Very much appreciate that. And final reminder, we have three jingles in the junction left on Thursday evenings from 5:00 to 8:00. So we invite the public to come down and join us.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Steve. Please get out to Valley Junction. It's a great time. Please support our small businesses. Two out of every three new jobs are created by small businesses. I know they would love to see you. Anybody else for Citizens Forum? All right, come on down, give us your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Jay Kennedy with Thirsty Pigs Mobile Events. I know some of you recognize me by now. I live in Madrid, 317 South Kennedy, Madrid. Was trying to help a nonprofit group do an event, and Alcohol Beverage Division has had some changes. The application is in the works. I'm not sure if I need a license for this particular event. It's next Thursday. It's on city, it's in the city park, or that building there. So I guess I was just asking for a little bit of variance if, to figure out what exactly we needed.
Well, the guy that you need to talk to is sitting right in front of you. His name's Ryan Jacobson. He's our city clerk. So I would say, why don't you send him an email or get together with him tomorrow?
No problem. Okay, I just, I know there's due process, but there's been some changes and just appreciate all of your time, as you guys probably recognize me by now.
And tell me again when the event is, where the event is?
Raccoon River Park.
Okay. And what day?
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday, Raccoon River Park.
We'll be in touch. Thank you all very much.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Okay, anybody else for Citizens Forum in the chamber
before I go online? Okay, anybody online for Citizens Forum, hit star six to unmute yourself and give us your name and address.
For the record, is there anybody online for Citizens Forum?
Hello, Mr. Mayor, I'm here.
All right, Amy, give us your name and address for the record, please.
Amy, A-M-Y, Viewer, B-U-E-H-R-E-R, and you can also find my Facebook page with that name.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead, you've got five minutes.
First of all, please, please don't violate my First Amendment rights, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Russ Trimble, and Mayor Pro-Tim Rene Hardman. Please do not violate my First Amendment rights by interrupting me. West Des Moines City Hall blocked access to my property, leaving me with only ICE to chew and ice water for Thanksgiving. Mr. Mayor, have your police partnered with ICE to enhance security, given Iowa's potential influx of undocumented immigrants and incidents like the murder of Molly Tibbetts? West Des Moines City Hall widened the road on Mill Civic Parkway coming from the interstate, making it more accessible for drug and goods trafficking, speeding, and drag racing. West Des Moines City Hall employees, including City Manager Tom Haddon, receive significant higher salaries than the average citizen. I am advocating for City Hall employee salary adjustment to reflect the average salary of its West Des Moines citizens, which is $50,000 to $60,000 a year compared to City Hall employees, most of them clearing over $100,000, and Tom Haddon, $200,000, and I believe $30,000 a year. I found an article online where City Council member Rene Hardman's advice was to research BLM that she was advocating for, and I found the charity was under IRS audit, and news reports allege misuse of donated funds for $6 million luxury properties. And this is who Rene Hardman advocates for. Tom Haddon's special census prompted me to think about card counting methods used by cheaters. This led to thoughts about the November city elections and the perception that things were not evening out, considering City Hall's partnerships with virtually all agencies except ICE. I began pondering the larger picture, and they all seemed to be closely linked. Public corruption. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
All right, anybody else online for Citizens Forum, star six to unmute yourself and give us your name and address for the record?
Mr. Mayor, this is Rene Hardman.
Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman. Thank you for joining us.
If there are, yes, and thank you for allowing me to join virtually. And, you know, I, I want to take this moment, as I normally don't do, as I listen to Amy's rant via City Council telephonic phone calls. But some point, at some point in time, you need to stand up for yourself. And what she just said is full of untruth, and I want that to be noted for the record. And I appreciate that she is a constituent in West Des Moines, lives here in West Des Moines, but one thing I'm going to do is I'm going to stand up for people that are using public airways to smear people and their record. And so let the record be known that she is, she is espousing untruth. Period.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman. And with that, why don't we retake attendance? Or are we, are we good?
We're good, since she's on line. We noted the time she was.
All right, we will note that all five council people are here. Thank you very much, Councilwoman, for your remarks. Appreciate those.
You're welcome.
Okay, anybody else for Citizens Forum? Okay, Citizens Forum is closed. We're going to move on to item three, Mayor, Council, Manager Report, Other Entities Update. And I will start down to my left here with Councilman Loetz. Any report?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Councilman Trevillion?
Nothing this time.
All right, thank you, Councilman. We will go online to Councilwoman Hardman. Any report this evening? Councilwoman, you probably have to hit star six to unmute yourself. Sometimes it will get tricky from muting and unmuting. All right, we will move on to Councilman McKinney.
Nothing at this time, Mayor, thank you.
Councilman Hudson?
Nothing at this time.
All right, back to Councilwoman Hardman. Any report at all? If I don't hear from you, I will assume no report.
She just unmuted.
Okay. Go ahead, Renee, if you can. Okay, we are going to move on then to item four, Consent Agenda, and, and we are going to, oh, I'm sorry, sorry, no report, sorry about that, Deputy City Manager Letzring. Okay, didn't mean to not include you. Thank you, Councilman. All right, moving on to item four, Consent Agenda. We're going to poll items four, C4, and we are also going to poll item four, K, the proclamation for Human Rights Day. I know we've got a number of people here today for that proclamation.
Motion to move the rest, Your Honor.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded.
I was hoping to try to pull four.
I'm sorry, hold on.
Yeah.
Four E2. Okay, four, okay, I'm sorry. Four E2, okay, Jamie Heard, Amathy to Restrooms. All right, so just for the record, we were pulling items four, C4, four E2, and four K. And with that, Councilman Loetz, you moved the remainder, and who seconded that?
Kevin.
All right, Councilman Trevillion seconded. With that, please vote.
Four yes. Can we stop and check and make sure Renee's unmuted?
Yeah. Renee, if you can, if you can unmute yourself, hit star six.
Okay, can, can we just unmute? We, we need her to unmute, and then if the guys in the booth can make sure she stays unmuted. Okay, Renee, can, can you speak to confirm that we can hear you?
I had this problem when I joined remotely one time as well. When you go hit star six, you speak, and then it goes back to muting you, and you, you got to keep it in star six to unmute, and it keeps muting you back again. It's, I don't know why, but.
Yeah. I mean, she's unmuted, but I'm not sure if she's aware that she's unmuted.
Renee, are you there? Can you say something so we know that you're there?
Yes, I am here trying to speak, but star six is not allowing that.
All right, we hear you now, so whatever you did, it's, it's worked.
Okay.
All right, so.
So I vote aye.
Okay, thank you so much.
Five yes.
All right.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item four, C4. Does somebody want to move this? It's Come and Go, Elsie, Doing Business as Maverick, 5393.
Motion to approve, four, C4.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any, okay, is there any discussion? All right, please vote.
Four yes, one abstention due to potential conflict of interest.
Okay, item four E2, it's Approval of Professional Service Agreements, Jamie Heard, Amathy to Restrooms, Councilman McKinney.
Thank you, Mayor. This, this item came before our Public Services Subcommittee, where some general information was shared. I had some emails back and forth with Ryan Penning at Parks and Rec over the weekend, and I just have some additional follow-up questions. I'm hopeful that maybe we can, assuming it doesn't create a problem, I looked at the timeline on this. It looks like things are supposed to begin in January with the, with the consultant. It'd be my preference to delay this until the, you know, what does it be, the 15th?
Sure.
But I don't know if there's, as I review it, it doesn't look like there's a problem there. I'd ask Ryan, you know, if there's going to be a problem by delaying it two weeks, and I guess we would, I'd be helpful to know that.
All right, Ryan, come on up. Is there any major issue delaying two weeks?
No. Ryan Penning, Parks and Recreation Director, shouldn't be, pushes back significantly, so we can delay that for another two weeks, and then if there's additional questions that you have or additional information that you need from us, just let us know, and I can get that information to you.
Perfect. Now, thank you for your communications over the weekend, and yeah, I'd move to push it two weeks.
Okay, it's been moved that we deferred this to the December 15th meeting. It's been seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, please vote.
Five yes.
All right, that will be moved to the December 15th meeting. And then item four K is a proclamation honoring Human Rights Days, December 10th, 2025. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved, seconded.
Second. Okay, it's, it's been moved and seconded, and I am going to read the proclamation, and then after the proclamation, I ask that anybody that is here for this, meet us down in front here of the dais, and we will take a picture, and I will present you with this proclamation. All right. Whereas on Wednesday, December 10th, 2025, the international community will unite to observe Human Rights Day and affirm the inalienable rights that all people are born free and equal in dignity and rights. And whereas on this day in 1948, the United Nations Assembly adopted the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, the historical documents signed by 193 countries set out a broad range of fundamental rights and freedoms to which all persons are entitled irrespective of income, nationality, or background. And whereas this nation was founded on the revolutionary principles of liberty, equality, and justice. And although it has not always been the case for all, we must strive to actively uphold these ideas and insist on recognizing our shared humanity. And whereas we urge all, all residents, businesses, and visitors of West Des Moines to commit to building a more just and welcoming community, where every person is entitled to fair opportunity and equal rights irrespective of age, race, class, gender, income, ability, sexual orientation, religion, language, veteran status, marital status, and/or any other identity. We emphasize the importance of protecting human liberty throughout our city. And whereas we have a special responsibility to advance the claim of the oppressed, and the West Des Moines Human Rights Commission plays a key role in educating residents about their rights. As we are free, we must speak up and advocate for those who do not have equal rights. Now, therefore, I, Russ Trimble, Mayor of the City of West Des Moines, do hereby proclaim December 10th, 2025, as Human Rights Day, and I call upon residents, city employees, and businesses of West Des Moines to uphold the rights of others and embrace the diversity of all residents and visitors in the City of West Des Moines. Signed this first day of December 2025. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, this is Renee.
Okay, go ahead, Councilwoman.
First of all, I want to thank you for reading the proclamation as I listened to the words that were being shared. I am so proud to be in a city that still lifts up this type of proclamation and believes that all of our citizens deserve fairness and equity and justice, and to live in a city that welcomes them regardless of what they bring to the table. So while I am not there personally, I want to thank the Human Rights Commission for all the work that they do to lift this up and to make sure that it's just not words on a piece of paper, but it's how we live, and it's how we treat our citizens, and it's how we govern. So I want to say thank you, and I want to say it's meaningful, and it's what makes West Des Moines, West Des Moines. So thank you.
Thank you for your words, Councilwoman. I echo that as well. Thank you to the Human Rights Commission, to everybody who serves. Thank you to Audrey Kennis, our incredible Director of Human Services, and oversees the Human Rights Commission, and for the beautiful proclamation that she helped put together. And it's true, we, these aren't just words on a paper. This is something that we live in West Des Moines. We want to make sure that everybody has an equal opportunity to grow and thrive and succeed here, and that we treat everybody with dignity and respect, and really appreciate all the work of our Human Rights Commission. So with that, please vote.
Five yes.
And I also am remiss.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can I also just share, take a moment, a personal privilege, to share that on Saturday, our very own Audrey Kennis is being awarded a key award from the NAACP for her, her work in human services, and her work on inclusion, and how she lifts her life and helps others live theirs. So she's getting a major award on Saturday, and she is representing the City of West Des Moines as she does that. So I'm proud, I'm excited, and I just wanted everyone to know that the community is recognizing one of our very own.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and congratulations, Audrey. So. Also, before we take a picture, and Councilwoman, I'm, it's too bad you can't be here. We're going to miss you in the picture, but thank you for being a great liaison to the Human Rights Commission as well, and for your voice in lifting up others. So we will miss you, but we're going to take a picture now, and maybe we can have somebody Photoshop you in.
Okay, yeah, okay. Thank you for the appointment. I enjoy that commission.
Stand right there, man, you know.
Break a pocket in my pocket.
There we go. Count of three. One, two, three.
That's one reason I came, so.
All right, to the people that came for that proclamation, please don't feel like you have to stay for the whole meeting. You're not going to offend us.
Oh, they're going to miss the good stuff.
All right.
And if you want.
There is a lot of great stuff left, no doubt about that. All right, and with that, speaking of great stuff, we're going to move to old business, item five, item five A, Amendment to City Code, Title I, Administrative, Chapter Seven, Officers and Employees, Section Seven, Resignations, Removals, Vacancies. We've got an Ordinance Amendment for Approval, the second reading, waiver, the third reading, adoption, and final form. There are no outstanding issues, and no changes from the previous reading, which was adopted unanimously by the council at our last meeting.
Motion to consider second reading.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, hearing none. Please vote.
Aye.
Five yes, North Amending the City Code to the City, West Des Moines, Iowa, 2024, by amending Title I, Administrative, Chapter Seven, Officers and Employees.
Motion to approve, second reading.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Five yes.
Motion to waive the third reading and adopt in final form.
Second.
Please vote.
Five yes.
Okay, item five B, Approval of Traffic Code Amendment, Through Streets, Stop Required, Stagecoach Drive, Mill Civic Parkway to South Grand Prairie Parkway. We've got an Ordinance Amendment for Approval, the second reading, waiver, the third reading, adoption, and final form. There are no outstanding issues and no changes from the previous reading, which again was adopted unanimously at the council at our last meeting.
Motion to second reading.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes, North Amending the City Code to the City, West Des Moines, Iowa, 2024, by amending provisions pertaining to the traffic code relating to official traffic controls.
Motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Please vote.
Aye.
Five yes.
Motion to waive the third reading and adopt in final form.
Second.
Please vote.
Aye.
Five yes.
Okay, item five C, Approval of Traffic Code Amendment, Special Stops Required, 54th Street and Colt Drive, 56th Street and Colt Drive, 57th and Colt, 59th Street and Colt Drive. We've got an Ordinance Amendment for Approval, the second reading, waiver, the third reading, adoption, and final form. There are no outstanding issues and no changes from the previous reading, which was adopted unanimously by the council at our last meeting.
Motion to consider second reading.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes, North Amending the City Code to the City, West Des Moines, Iowa, 2024, by amending provisions pertaining to the traffic code relating to official traffic controls.
Motion to approve, second reading.
Second.
Please vote.
Aye.
Five yes.
Motion to waive the third reading and adopt in final form.
Second.
Please vote.
Aye.
Five yes.
Okay, item five D, Approval of Traffic Code Amendment, No Parking Zone, South 81st Street, Mill Civic Parkway to Southern Terminus on the west side. We've once again got an Ordinance Amendment for Approval, the second reading, waiver, the third, adoption, and final form. There are no outstanding issues, and no changes from the previous reading, which was adopted unanimously by the council at the last meeting.
Motion to consider second reading.
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Please vote.
Aye.
Five yes, North Amending the City Code to the City, West Des Moines, Iowa, 2024, by amending provisions pertaining to the traffic code relating to official traffic controls.
Motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Please vote.
Aye.
Five yes.
Motion to waive the third reading and adopt.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes.
Okay, item six, Public Hearings, item six A. This is a time and a place for a public hearing. To consider Cedar Ridge Lot 28, 9217, Cedar Ridge Drive. Amend the zoning map to establish a single-family residential zoning initiated by Zachary and Haley Sims. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
November 14th, 2025, in the Des Moines Register.
And have received any written comments of this hearing?
Planned zoning commissioned by a vote of seven yes, adopted resolution recommending approval of the rezoning request.
Okay, anybody in the audience who would like to address the council on item six A, please come to the podium here, give us your name and address for the record. Anybody online, please hit star six to unmute yourself and do the same. Is there anybody either in the chamber or online that would like to address the council on item six A? Okay, hearing and seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and we've got an ordinance for the approval of the first reading for assignment of the zoning, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move Approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes, North Amending the Official Zoning Map of the City, West Des Moines, Iowa, 2024, by amending Title IX Zoning, Chapter Four, Zoning Districts and Maps.
Move Approval, the first reading.
Okay, please vote.
Five yes.
Okay, item six B, This is a time and a place for a public hearing. To consider Jordan West, 270 Jordan Creek Parkway. Amend the specific planned ordinance to reduce the building setback required along the southwest property line from 80 feet to 50, 50 feet, initiated by Ryan Companies US, Inc. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
November 14th, 2025, in the Des Moines Register.
And have received any written comments of this hearing?
Planned zoning commissioned by a vote of seven yes, adopted a resolution recommending approval of the specific plan amendment.
Okay, anybody in the audience who would like to address the council on item six B, please come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record. Anybody online, hit star six to unmute yourself and do the same. hit star six, to unmute yourself and do the same. Is there anybody that would like to address the council on item six B? Okay, hearing and seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We've got an ordinance amendment for approval, the first reading, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval.
Okay, is, okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes, North Amending the City Code to the City of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2024, and the Jordan West Pacific Plan Ordinance numbers 1749, 2097, 2384, and 2554 pertaining to plane unit development district regulations and guidelines.
Move approval of the first reading.
Second.
Please vote.
Aye.
Five yes.
Okay, item six C, This is a time and a place for a public hearing to consider Amendment number eight to the Alluvion Urban Renewal Area initiated by the City of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice is published?
November 21st, 2025, in the Des Moines Register.
And have we received any written comments to this hearing?
None, Your Honor.
Okay, anybody in the audience who would like to address the council on item six C, please come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record. Anybody online, please hit star six to unmute yourself and do the same. Is there anybody either in the chamber or online that would like to address the council on item six C? All right, going once, going twice. I'm going to declare the public hearing closed, and we have got a resolution for approval of the Urban Renewal Plan Amendment, and there are no outstanding issues. This was also approved unanimously by the Finance Administration City Council Subcommittee at their November 5th meeting.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I'd just say this is going to be really important for the future growth of our city south of Highway five, south of the river, providing public safety, fire services in that area. So it's, it's a big deal, and I know it's going to take some time, but this is an important step in the right direction.
Absolutely. Okay, any further discussion? All right, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes.
All right, item six D, This is a time and a place for a public hearing to consider 2025 Sewer Manhole Rehabilitation Program initiated by the City of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice is published?
November 14th, 2025, in the Des Moines Register.
And have we received any written comments to this hearing?
None, Your Honor.
Okay, anybody in the audience who would like to address the council on item six D, please come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record. Anybody online, hit star six to unmute yourself and do the same. Is there anybody that would like to address the council on item six D? Okay, hearing and seeing no one, I will declare the public hearing closed. We've got two resolutions and a motion, so we can take it at the same time, and there are no outstanding issues.
Motion to approve.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes.
Okay, item seven, New Business, Item seven A, Val Estates, 1500 South 60th Street, approve a preliminary plat to create six lots for single-family residential development and one street lot, Reed Holdings LLC. We have got a resolution for approval of the preliminary plat, and there are no outstanding issues, but there is one condition of approval involving the council allowing front yard public utility easements for all six lots. I would note this was also approved unanimously by the P&amp;Z Commission.
Motion approved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there anybody in the audience or online that would like to address the council on item seven A? Star six to unmute yourself if you're joining online. Okay, is there any discussion on the dais? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes.
Okay, item, item seven B, sorry, item seven B, Raccoon River Trail, generally 425 South First Street, approve a site plan to allow construction of a 10-foot-wide multipurpose concrete trail, City of West Des Moines and Polk County Conservation Board. We've got a resolution for approval of the site plan, and there are no outstanding issues. This was also approved unanimously by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Motion approved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All right, is there anybody in the audience or online that would like to address the council on item seven B? Is there any discussion on the dais? Okay, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes.
Okay, item seven C, Mid-American Energy Company Replex, 6500 Grand Avenue, approve a major modification to the site plan to allow construction of a 96,000-square-foot building addition and new parking lot city of West Des Moines and WDM South LLC. We've got a resolution for approval of a major modification to the site plan for the Mid-American Energy Company Replex, and there are no outstanding issues, but there are two conditions of approval. One condition involves the city planting the required number of trees prior to being issued an occupancy permit, and the other involves the existing water main easement being vacated and a new easement being created.
Motion approved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved, it's, okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there anybody in the audience or online that would like to address the council on item seven C? Is there any discussion on the dais?
This is exciting and cool.
I agree. I, I agree. I was going to say the same thing. It's going to be really an incredible, incredible project. It's going to be not only a third sheet of ice, but as you know, an event venue. I believe it's going to have about 3,000 seats, so that's going to be a great place to have concerts and all kinds of different events.
Well, and 452 additional parking spaces, because as I think everybody's seen, sometimes they're parking all the way to DMAC and, and the Right Tree Service, so those are going to be great, and certainly appreciate our corporate partners that have come in to help, help, you know, on the funding side.
Still probably not going to be enough parking places, but it's going to help.
Let's, let's hope not. That's a good problem to have, so. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
As the mayor says, it's, it's going to be a game changer.
It is, it is. We love those game changers. Quite frankly, we love them. All right, with that, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes.
All right, item seven D, Ordinance Amendment, amend Title II Boards and Commissions, Chapter two, Board of Adjustment, Section four, Jurisdiction Powers by repealing and replacing, Chapter two, Section four, Jurisdiction Powers in its entirety. We've got an ordinance amendment for approval, the first reading, and there are no outstanding issues.
Motion considered the first reading.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there anybody online or in the chamber that would like to address the council on item seven D? All right, is there any discussion on the dais? All right, hearing none, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes, North Amending the City Code to the City of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2024, by amending Title II Boards and Commissions, Chapter two, Board of Adjustment, Section four, Jurisdiction Powers by repealing and replacing, Chapter two, Section four.
Motion approved the first reading.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes.
All right, moving on to item seven E, Amendment to City Code Title four Health and Safety Regulations, Chapter three Fire Code. Adopt the International Fire Code 2024 Edition with local amendments. Repeal the International Fire Code 2021 Edition with local amendments. We have got an ordinance amendment for approval, the first reading, and there are no outstanding issues.
Motion to consider the first reading.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there anybody in the chamber or online that would like to address the council on this item? Okay, is there any discussion on the dais?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd just say, I know a lot of work goes into this. I see Marshall Woodson in the back there, and, you know, there's, I'm glad we're doing this, and, and it's important to do this. I know there's a lot of conversations that happen across the state and frankly, at the state level about, you know, should we update and should we not update, and maybe there's some additional cost to comply. But at the end of the day, our community is going to be that much safer when we know that we're building in accordance with the best practices. And so, yeah, it, it, it takes a lot of work. There's a lot of consideration goes into it, but it's the right thing to do, and over the course of time, it'll help both insurance costs and, and other, other risks out there. So just thanks to the good work that goes into these, into these updates.
Very well said. Any other discussion on this item? Okay, with that, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes, North Amending the City Code to the City of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2024, by repealing Title four Health and Safety Regulation, Chapter three Fire Code, and in lieu thereof adopting the 2024 edition of the International Fire Code.
Who moved that one?
Motion. Motion to approve the first reading.
Second.
All right, it's moved and seconded. Please vote.
Aye.
Five yes.
Okay, item seven F, Amendment to City Code Title six Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter five G Rules of the Road, miscellaneous rules, Section 10 General Traffic Regulations to Comply with Iowa Code, Section 321.238. We've got an ordinance amendment for approval, the first reading, and there are no outstanding issues.
Motion to approve.
First reading.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there anybody in the chamber or online that would like to address the council on this item? Star six to unmute yourself. Okay, hearing no one, is there any discussion on the dais?
Well, I guess I spoke on the last item.
All right, go ahead.
Some things are happening at the state level. This is one thing that they did do in the right direction, and that is hands-free. And I don't know if anybody saw this last week, there was a report about how the number of traffic deaths, deaths in Iowa has dropped the first time we may close out the year with less than 300, and they're attributing a lot of that to the fact that the state of Iowa passed a hands-free law. And so I know, you know, obviously, this doesn't relate to that in the sense that we're removing this because of the state preemption. I'm glad to see that hands-free is moving forward in Iowa.
Yeah, absolutely. No, we've got to update the city code to reflect state code, and it's good that we're doing this. I appreciate our city attorney for flagging this and updating it or eliminating it to abide by the state code. I, I agree. I think it's a great thing, and I, I think there's, you know, been a lot of issues with not just kids, but regular citizens on their cell phone, being, being distracted, driving down the road. This is a, a great change that, as you said, has already improved public safety, so it's a good thing. All right, with that, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes, North Amending the City Code to the City of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2024, by amending Title six Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter five G Rules of the Road, miscellaneous rules.
Motion to approve the first reading.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes.
Okay, item seven G, Repeal of Sugar Creek Stormwater Connection Fee District, Title seven, Chapter eight, Article H dash one. We've got an ordinance amendment for approval, the first reading, and there are no outstanding issues.
Motion to consider first reading.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there anybody in the audience or online that would like to address the council on item seven G? Any discussion on the dais? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes, North Amending the City Code to the City of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2024, Title seven, Chapter eight, by repealing Article H one Sugar Creek Stormwater Connection Fee District.
Motion to approve first reading.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes.
Okay, item eight, Receive File and/or Refer. Item eight A, We will receive and file the abstract of election. Item eight B, We will also receive and file the resignation from Courtney Garcia Moller, who served on our Public Art Advisory Commission. Unfortunately, Courtney moved away to the City of Des Moines, and as a result of that, is no longer eligible to serve on our Public Art Commission, but we do want to thank her for her service and giving back to the community and for all she did in her time of service. We will miss her, but I know she will stay engaged and pay attention to everything that the Public Art Commission is doing. So with that, item nine, Other Matters. Are there any other matters that any councilperson would like to raise at this time for the good of the order?
This is Renee.
Okay, go ahead.
As relates to eight, as relates to eight A, I'd like to congratulate Councilman Trevilian and Councilman Loat, as well as yourself, on the results that appear before you on November, for November 4th municipal elections. Congratulations.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Congratulations to you as well.
Yes.
Absolutely. A lot of hard work goes into running for office, no doubt about that. And, you know, as I mentioned at the event just before this, a lot of support from our family members and so many members of the community that, that come out and support us. It's really very heartwarming, and we appreciate everybody's support. So, all right. With that, we are going to then adjourn into our workshop. We have no executive session, so at this point in time, we are adjourned, and we will convene in, in our workshop, which will be right here in about three minutes. We'll take a three-minute break.
I probably will not be able to be at the workshop, but I definitely.